Meeting to order. Welcome to the Palmdale City Council. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Bishop.
Here.
Mayor Protimloa.
Here.
Councilmembers Olson.
Here.
Bettencourt.
Here.
And Alakon.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Let's go ahead and move to item number three, the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence. Mayor Protimloa, can you lead us in that?
Yes, sir. Hand of your heart, repeat. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence, please, before you sit. Thank you. And that's in recognition of our first responders that put their lives on the line every day.
Well said. All right. That takes us to our cute critter video. Let's go ahead and cue that and turn your eyes to the large screen to your right. All right. Aren't they adorable? If you like them, go adopt them. We've got plenty of animals up for adoption in our shelter. So, city clerk, can we please acknowledge the observances for the month of August?
The city of Palmdale would like to acknowledge the following observances: National Traffic Awareness Month, and also National Night Out was yesterday.
All right. Thank you. National Night Out was great. All right. 4.1, Presentation by Kids Feeding Kids. Who do we have here from that? Ms. Dabino? All right. There you go. Looks like we got a nice presentation here.
I do, I do. Thank you. So, good evening and welcome to our Kids Feeding Kids Through Agriculture and all of our kids that are here representing, which is great. It's an honor to be here, mayor and city council. And I'm going tonight to give you, on behalf of the Kids Feeding Kids program through agriculture, give a presentation and an update and some history about the Kids Feeding Kids program. Kids Feeding Kids started in 2019 with a simple conversation. At a livestock council appreciation dinner, John Rocky and the livestock council, we gave them an appreciation dinner. And we kind of had a roundtable discussion. And in that roundtable discussion was brought up that John Rocky had donated a hog the previous year to Grace Resources. And it was overwhelming, the response from Grace Resources, they do not receive farm-to-table beef at all, meat at all. So, with that being said, he had said that, you know, I really would like to start something and see if we can do this more often. And he says, I really want to donate to Grace. And I popped up and said, I'm more than willing to help you, but SAVES is going to be included. So, with that, Kids Feeding Kids was really formed. I was a new board member at the fair board. I did not know anything about the livestock auction. I didn't know how it worked. I didn't know anything. So, I did a lot of research and asked a lot of questions. And I found out about the buyback program. So, the buyback program is, if any of you have been to the auction, and you've got all these kids here, they've been to the auction. A buyer or a buyer's group buys a lot of animals. Each one of these kids is taken care of. And at the end of the day, there's a lot of animals they have no use of having, really. So, they have a buyback program. And what the buyback program is, is it's a wholesale. And so, you get a credit back on your bill. Anywhere for hogs at the time was 40 to 60 cents a pound. So, with that being said and hearing about it, I asked the question to myself, why are we letting this meat leave our valley? This does make no sense to me whatsoever. So, on top of that, it leaves to a wholesaler or it had left to a wholesaler prior that takes the meat out of the valley and sells it on the retail market. I knew we had to make a change. It had to be a change made. So, with that being said, John Rocky and I and lots of other people that are in this room had four months to get it together before the auction. And we went out there, pounded the tables, pounded the ground, raised money. And that very first year, we were able to buy I was going to see if this came up, 30 hogs. 30 hogs is a lot. Now, with buying 30 hogs, it has to go through inspection. It has to go through processing. It has to go through USDA. So, there's lots of money involved to get it back to this program. At that point, we were able to give to Grace and to SAVES approximately 3,500 pounds of meat. That's a lot of meat. And again, it's all hogs.
What would that go for a retail, you think?
We're talking prime meat here. Prime. Our only criteria was, first, this meat would go to families with school-aged children. Second, our seniors and our veterans. Nothing else. We were very strong about that. The two food banks were overwhelmed with the donation that they received that day. That was in 2019. In January of 2020, I attended my first Western Fairs Association Conference in Reno, Nevada. Excited to attend and learn new ideas, I did not expect to be presenting the Kids Feeding Kids program to the attendees. Finding out that the Antelope Valley had submitted the Kids Feeding Kids program to what is called the Merrill Award, the highest award a fair can receive. I then found out we made it to the semifinals. Our competition was LA County Fair, Orange County Fair, and Fresno State Fair, and Antelope Valley Fair. I am pleased to announce, we won the Merrill Award for Kids Feeding Kids. I knew then, we were on to something. John then kind of handed it and said, Debbie, it's yours. I'm moving out of the area. So, with coming back on a high in 2020, all of a sudden, the dreaded COVID hits. And we do not have a fair in 2020. We had raised the money. We had the money. And I ended up calling Grace and SAVES and saying, what do you need? And they said, we need turkeys and we need chickens. And we were able to provide 600 turkeys and 300 chickens. Again, to go to families with school-aged children, our veterans, and our seniors. 2021, Kids Feeding Kids faced another challenge. We were back on with a fair, but when it came to auction, we had no buybacks at all. And that was pretty scary. So, what it did for us is it made us reevaluate our program. And in 2022, we started Kids Feeding Kids Through Agriculture. A learning component and working on getting the livestock program back into the high schools. Kids Feeding Kids Through Agriculture was born, and we hit the ground running. Our board members, myself, Michelle Royal, there you go, Angie Hughes, Scott Clark, and Brian Garrindo. We do this on 100% volunteer. We take no money for this whatsoever. These board members have the expertise. They know how to raise an animal. They all have farms. I'm a city girl. I just do the work. But, with that being said, Michelle Royal was able to go over to Boys and Girls Club. And there's where we started with our learning program. Michelle contacted the Boys and Girls Club of the Antelope Valley and explained our program. Rosemont High School and Little Rock High School agreed to raise hogs for us and to have their livestock kids teach the new kids coming in. Great program. We started the Mentor Mentee Program, which is our livestock kids teaching kids coming in that have never even known what an animal was. In fact, when we went and talked to the Boys and Girls Club, we asked them, where do you get your bacon? We get it at the store. Well, where do you think it comes from? It comes from the store. No, it doesn't, you know? Which was fabulous. We had one of our livestock kids at the time, she has since graduated out of it, write our Mentor Mentee Program. And the Boys and Girls Club provided the transportation over to her home in Palmdale, her ranch, I should say, not home. And there, the kids learned how to take care of an animal. We also had a family in East Lancaster that took in three animals for us. These are our kids that are doing this. This is not us. They are the ones that do all the hard work. It was a six-week learning program, and it was very successful. The kids learned so much, and I think they thoroughly enjoyed it. And I think that they actually appreciate meat today. Because it's not an easy thing to do. A total of 25 hogs were raised that year, just by kids. And then, we also did a buyback of another 25 hogs, which SAVES and Grace then netted 7,810 pounds of farm-to-table meat. 2023, our program keeps growing, and more buybacks were purchased through the livestock auction, increasing our donations of fresh farm-to-table meat to 55. This is in 2023. And that is the most we've ever, ever had, except for 2024. Huge change came to the fair that year. We changed our auction from August to April. Much cooler weather. I think it was great for the kids. We had a great turnout. Last year was our first, this year, excuse me, was our first year. And we, as Kids Feeding Kids Through Agriculture, really didn't know what to expect because it had only been eight months prior the other auction took place. But needless to say, we were very excited when I got a call from Dan Jacobs and said, Deb, are you sitting down? I'm sitting down. We have 94 hogs for you guys this year. 9,100 pounds came to SAVES, and 9,100 pounds went to Grace Resources. 18,200 pounds raised by Weezy. That's saying something. Our livestock kids are some of the most dedicated kids in this valley. They are smart, devoted, and are our future leaders. Without these kids, our program would not exist. And without the support of the fair, we would not have this program. They learn to budget their money. They learn to budget their time. They learn to budget their finances for feed, for other essentials, for if the animal gets sick. This is put on these kids, and they have to learn it. They work seven days a week. There are no days off. And they are the ones that have to take care of that animal. When they go to auction, a lot of these kids use some of their earnings that they get from the auction to buy their animal for the next year. And a lot of them put it into a savings program to further their education after high school. A livestock kid can start at the age of nine years old. And they age out at 18, when they're in high school as a senior. Where many fairs no longer have a livestock program, the Antelope Valley continues to support the program and has a dedicated volunteer livestock council, leaders, and participants. And again, they all do this for free. They are absolutely volunteers, 100%. If you have any children that you know of that would like to get into this livestock program, please have them contact the Antelope Valley Fair Livestock. It is a great program. If you have not ever come to a livestock auction, please come. These kids are amazing, and they are our future leaders. I think at this time, I would like to ask Patricia Morales to come up and give a little report of what Kids Feeding Kids Through Agriculture has done for Palmdale.
Hello, mayor, council. I don't know what else I can say. This program is amazing. The impact to the community, the impact that I have seen at SAVES is incredible. It's, as you know, purchasing protein meat is really expensive. It always has been. SAVES, like Grace Resource, works in collaboration with our local vendors and the local food bank. And sometimes, that's the one thing that is very challenging to obtain and very expensive. So, for SAVES to get somebody, for me to get the call from Debbie saying, would you like some meat? That's amazing. But the most amazing part was to be able to, as she went through in her presentation, to know that students were the ones that made this happen for the community. Some of the things that we have done at SAVES to honor their requests, to ensure that the food is going to families with minor children, seniors, and veterans, is that the meat is given out only to those families that fit those criterias. We also, Debbie and her group and her team has worked really diligently with us in ensuring that the meat that comes to us comes in certain packages that are very flexible for us to provide to families. They ensure that they come in one-pound packages so that if we need to give to a small family, we can give them the one pound. But if we need to give it to large families, we can give them multiple pounds. They also have been really, we have learned together what works best for them financially, meat-wise, and what works best for our families, right? So, one of the things that they did that has been a great, great for us is they give us roast, small roast. And so, those roasts, we give to our seniors for the holidays. Because we had so much of those roasts this year, we started a new program. Traditionally, we do Thanksgiving and December holiday. And we give people, our families and seniors, a basket with turkey, meat, or anything. And this year, we did it for spring baskets. And we had families and seniors, and they were able to get those roasts that came from Kids Feeding Kids. We had a great turnout. And we know that with our partnership, we're going to be able to continue doing this. It's amazing to see how proud the students are when they come. A lot of them come. Not only do they put all the work in raising the animal, but they also come the day of the delivery. They come and use their muscles and bring all the meat in. And they have also, I've had some of them come and do the distributions when we're doing our special giveaways. So, to me, this is an incredible program. It's win-win all around. And I'm really pleased and honored to have been working with this program for so long. Thank you.
So, at this point, I think that we need to give a round of applause to our livestock kids and have them stand up.
I was doing some numbers and some rough math. I added up all the pounds and the turkeys and the chickens and all that. That falls just short of half a million dollars.
Yes, it does.
And you think about all the families that didn't have, that didn't go hungry because of that for, you know, just not weeks, but for months and months.
Yes. And our criteria is very strict. We are very strict about it. These are the kids doing the job. They absolutely are. They need to go to families with kids, period. And our seniors and our vets. But that is exactly, and both of the food banks have followed through with that. Another high for 2024 is Palmdale High School. Palmdale High School, for the first time in 15 years, raised animals. Stand up, guys, stand up, stand up. We have the livestock program back at Palmdale High School. And that's one of our goals, is to have the livestock program back in every single high school in this valley. On a final note, I could not end this speech without some thanks. First off, to the city of Palmdale for always supporting us. And you know I'm going to come to you guys for more money, sorry. The city of Lancaster also, they do an exceptional job of helping us out. Rotary West, we could not do this without Rotary West. The Assistance League of the Antelope Valley, they were the first, second one to give me a check in 2019. Supervisor Catherine Barger was the first one that gave us $5,000. Kowana's West Palmdale, Kowana's West Lancaster, our Union Trades. AVAC, AVAC gave us money. Starbucks, Starbucks did a great fundraiser for us. Dillard's Department Store has also given a day of 10% back in sales. Surtoma out of the Leona Valley, and Jack's Place out of the Leona Valley. And not to mention all of the individual donations that we have received. On a final note, because I get to stand here and I don't have three minutes, I have to give a plug to the Antelope Valley Fair. And you know what's coming up? The 25th through the 29th of September. The theme this year is "Hay," and that's not hay-e-y, that's H-A-Y. It's a musical fair. And was developed by the high school kids from Lancaster High School's Audio and Visual and Engineering Department. Our entertainment starts with Nellie, followed by Jefferson Starship, that's more my age. Wiz Khalifa and Walker Hayes. And a final one to be announced. Come on out and enjoy your fair, because it is your fair. Our community is very blessed to have pristine fairgrounds. Our staff and directors work hard to bring you the best fair possible with great entertainment. There is something for everyone. Come and visit our barns. We will have animals in there. We will have a petting zoo in there. We will have bottle-feed a calf. We will have learn how to churn butter with a lot of other things. Okay? Come visit our Home March Department. Our Home March Department are people that live in this valley that submit their projects. And it's amazing, some of the talents of these people. You can see local artists display their work in art, table settings, baking contest, excuse me, bling contest. It's very high coveted. Baking contest, salsa contest, quilting, and much more. Get involved and enter a project. We hope to see you all at the fair. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, we all, Alan here, are free to answer anything that you would like to ask us.
Whoa.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Before we have any questions, do any of the parents, or even better, do any of the kids want to come up and speak or say anything? Tell us what you learned? I know public speaking is not very popular. Somebody's going to want to do it. Come on. I see some elbow taps going on. There's some, huh? All right. You guys, you guys.
My name is David De La Cruz.
My name is Miranda Antonio.
And we were part of the Kids Feeding Kids program. We raised our own hog, and all of the money went back to us. And it's great. I mean, I loved the project. I loved being able to help unload all of the meat to the SAVES and Grace. It was truly a learning experience. Because it was during my senior year, and before that, I mean, I never even knew how to take care of a pig. Sure, I was raised on a farm, but never knew how to take care of a pig. We had sheep and goats. Anything you want to add?
No, thank you.
You made it up to the podium, that's pretty good. Thank you for coming up. That meat's pretty heavy, right?
Yeah.
Moving it around?
Yeah, I was tired by the end of the day. Say I went home and took a good nap.
We've all been there and moved the pieces. The meat, especially when it comes in frozen, and I got to tell you, it's soreness the next day.
Oh, yeah.
It's for a good cause. Thank you for coming up. Thank you for being part of it.
Of course.
And thank you, kids, and thank you, parents, for making sure that they can have the opportunity to participate in this program.
Thank you for helping us.
All right, council, do we have any questions? Any comments?
I just want to say that people probably don't realize how much of a difference there is between a farm-raised hog and a commercially-raised hog. I have a medical condition that I try to do as much organic and farm-raised as I can. I get my meat from Polyface Farms back east. I have it shipped in. The nutrients are different, the flavor is different. Not only are they bringing food to our community, but they're bringing high-quality food, which actually would cost more than the regular commercial raised cost. So, you're doing an amazing job. You're keeping families fed and healthy. And I appreciate all of your efforts. And thank you, Debbie, and everyone that's involved with this program.
Well, you know, to me, it's very gratifying to see young people come into the council chamber. And when these events are held, the auction at the fairgrounds, and you all come out with your various animals during the auction, it must be a moment that you're probably going to remember for the rest of your life. And it's an important and significant event here in this Antelope Valley. We still treasure our farms. We still treasure our animals that are grown. We treasure the auction and the fantastic job in giving away this food to the people who need it the most. So, it's a very worthy cause. It's not just raising money for your own special projects, but really to feed the community. And I applaud you. We all honor you and thank you for participating. And you know what? Tell others about it. Be advocates for it. Bring other people into the program. Because there's no limit to what we can do. And we have several people here from the fair. We recognize their efforts as well. And thank you all. Thank you very much.
All right, well said.
I'm a vegetarian. Way to go, Eric. But I'm a very supportive vegetarian. I think I've been to the auction the last three years in a row because it's a cause that I do support because of the life skills and the discipline that these kids learn. That's invaluable. So, we need more of this. We need more engagement. So, if you're listening at home and you've got a child 9 to 18 years old, but you don't necessarily have a ranch or space to raise one of these animals, still reach out. because this group is so supportive, somebody might have that space that they'll volunteer to you. So, great job. Keep it up. Let's do even better next year.
I just want to, a lot's been said and I just want to echo, uh, what, what my colleagues, uh, have said. Congratulations and kudos to each and every one of you. You are indeed our future leaders. The fact that you guys are giving back to your communities at such a young age, these are, uh, life-lasting lessons, uh, in service. And so we owe you a debt of gratitude for stepping up to the plate and giving back to your community to serve families in need. There is no doubt that families are struggling. We see, uh, on a regular basis that food distributions are growing, uh, and, and the need continues to skyrocket. So you guys are doing an incredible job in, uh, in making a dent in that and, and helping to provide food for the tables of the families in the AV. But I want to give a special shout out to my Falcon family, my Palmdale High School kids in my district. So proud of you. I would, hopefully we can extend the program to Highland and Pete Knight and, and other schools throughout the Antelope Valley. Congratulations to each and every one of you and to all the parents. You know, raising, raising, uh, kids like this who are of service, uh, that comes from the home. That comes from the hearts, uh, of your households, from your parents. And so thank you for extending the time and, and the effort it takes to take these kids back and forth and, and to help guide these kids down, uh, the right path. Thank you to all of you.
Well, well said. And Eric, I think you got a joke in the night, bud. Good job. Yeah, okay. So with that, we've got a little token of our appreciation. We've got some certificates. I'm going to ask the mayor pro tem to step down with me and we're going to present them.
All right, Jamie Romelo. Jamie here? Okay. We'll get it to him though.
Yes, we will.
Elisa Oriana. Also not here.
They're being recognized.
Luis Melendez. Also not here. We're batting a thousand, folks. Just like the Dodgers. Danica Niebla Rodriguez. There we go. No job is done till the pictures are taken, okay? Thank you. Landon Harris. Landon, there we go. You're also on the basketball team, right?
No, I'm not.
Thank you, Landon. Thank you so much. Congratulations. David Delacousse. And you're a good speaker, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much. Miranda Antonio. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Esmeralda Avila. Esmeralda, right over here. Now, do a picture, come on, take a picture. Okay, all right. Adrian Vega. You might have to stay up here. Alexandra Kerr Moore. You sure don't want the picture?
There's a positive.
Nathaniel Gonzalez. What about over here? Are we done? Okay, you're gonna have to come back. But look, we really appreciate you. We really do. And what you're doing is, is just really fabulous with all seriousness, so. And your parents are there supporting you. And there's no more beautiful thing than the love of a parent for their child. And you guys are making them proud. Okay, are we gonna recognize?
Yeah, can, maybe, can we just go, hand them the mic and maybe they could just say their name? Since we don't have certs for them, just pass the mic along each one and just tell us your name and what grade you're in?
Sounds good. Raise a hand who wants to do that.
Yeah, let's make sure we get a cert for Debbie too.
Okay, I'm Luke Hoffman and I'm going to the 10th grade.
I'm Brayden Hum and I'm going into 8th grade.
I'm Victoria Alvarez Yields, I'm going into 9th grade.
Hello, I am Hunter Rowe and I'm going to, wait, no, I'm in the 6th grade.
Hi, I'm Ryan Jensen and I'm currently in the 8th grade.
I'm Jonathan Monaco and I'm in 5th grade.
I'm Josh Jensen and I'm going into 9th grade.
I'm Bobby Rowe and I'm going into 7th grade.
My name's Wyatt Rowe and I'm in 10th grade.
My name's Orion Rodriguez and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Mackie Monaco and I'm in 6th grade.
I'm also Rowe and I'm going to, I, I mean, no, I'm in 8th grade.
My name is Dermot Maffey, I'm in 6th grade.
Well done, great job. All right, with that, let's go get everyone up for a big group photo with the entirety of the city council. All right, come on up, come on up. You guys want to come down or?
Sure.
Let's come down in all form and.
Shall we just stand up here?
All right. Back and you're gonna have to get close, sorry.
I told you we'd meet your wife. No. No, where did you come from? Yeah, no, I actually shipped my meat from a polyface farm. I, I heard about it on the movie Fed Up, have you ever seen the movie?
Yes.
Okay. They talked about polyface farms being organic, smell farm and the shovel and the pressure. High, high quality, all kinds of meat.
Make sure I can see your faces. There we go. Thank you.
Sounds good. Good guy.
Everybody ready? Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Awesome job, guys. All right, thank you for your cooperation. All right, let's take a short recess and then we're, let the room clear and we will resume the meeting shortly. Five council members, look at that. All right. City manager, are there any items to pull from tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none. So city clerk, can you please play the public comment code of conduct into the record? And the public participation statement as well. All right, let's, uh, let's go ahead and move on to public comments. And city clerk, go ahead and please play the public comment code of conduct into the record.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Now is the time for public participation on items listed on the consent calendar, section 6. The appointment, section 7, and also section 12, closed session items. Now is the time for public participation on those sections. We have no speaker cards at this time for those sections, mayor and council.
All right, seeing none. So council members, would you like to pull any items from the consent calendar?
Yes, please, if I may pull 6.4 and 6.5, please.
All right, pulling 6.4, 6.5. I'm also going to pull 6.6. So let's go ahead and.
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Go ahead and vote on the computer screen.
Start voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right. 6.4.
Hi, and as you walk up, ju- just so that everybody's aware, the reason why I pulled these two items are because I think they're wonderful programs and I just want the community to understand a little bit more about what we're doing and, and why we're doing it. So thank you for, for sharing your report.
Yes. Can everyone hear me?
Okay.
Good evening. Good evening, council. Uh, my name is Emily Garcia and I am an analyst with the city's Parks and Recreation Team. Okay, so the item before you tonight, item 6.4, is to approve an agreement with Jad Hoyos Inc. Doing Business as Feathers Custom Signs. And this will be to provide anti-graffiti wrap services for the city in the amount of $150,000 for a term of one year with the option to extend to one-year terms. As you may recall, last year, we wrapped 103 traffic control utility cabinets with graffiti-resistant laminate, which was very well received by our community. We are now proposing to wrap the remaining 160 roadway utility cabinets to con- to continue graffiti abatement and community beautification efforts across the city. To expedite the additional wrapping of these 160 cabinets, we conducted a community survey that included imagery of our local landscape, aerospace, and diversity. And the public had the opportunity to vote on which top selections they wanted to see around our community. This survey did very well and we collected nearly 300 responses. As a result, we, Parks and Recreation partnered with the city's purchasing team to release an invitation for bids in which Feathers Custom Signs was found to be the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. Therefore, we are here tonight recommending to award this agreement to Feathers Custom Signs to continue to support the city's efforts to combat graffiti. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you for that overview report. I have gotten on several occasions, questions, um, by my constituents and, and other residents in the city of Palmdale. What are those things on those boxes all over the city? Why does it say measure AV money is going there? And then I, you know, I, I go through about a, a five-minute spiel as to why it's a beneficial program. It's graffiti-resistant art. We're utilizing some local talent in our kids in, in order to incorporate their, their artwork in these drawings. Uh, it, it's cost-efficient, it, it cuts down in terms of our, uh, public works response time when graffiti goes up on those utility boxes. Uh, and then after I explain it all, they're like, oh, that sounds great. Good job. But I just wanted to take an opportunity, since we're going to extend the program, I think last time we did 103 utility boxes. In this round, we're going to do another 160. That's a total of 263, uh, utility boxes citywide that we're going to wrap. Uh, and that's graffiti that will not be blight in, in your local, uh, neighborhood. So I just wanted to, to sh- shine a little light on the program, a little bit, uh, as to why all of this kind of artwork in these wraps are on utility boxes throughout our city. And thank you and thank, uh, Park and Recs for doing the community survey and getting community feedback. The, I, I don't know if there's a way to show them, but, um, i- if people want to see them, I guess, uh, they might be online, but.
Yes, um, oh, do you have them? Yeah, we have them available to pull up the three top selections at the community. Yes.
There we go.
Um, on the screen here to the left is, um, the three selections that the community had the opportunity to vote on. Um, they chose between, um, several images from our Adobe digital catalog. Um, and like I said, it included images of our local landscape, diversity, aerospace, the things that are important to our community. And these were the selections that they wanted to see.
We had a good response in the community too. It's nice to, to see the input and I'm not afraid to say I voted.
So coming soon to a community near you, there's a motion and I'll second it.
Motion, second, let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting. Start voting.
Okay.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving on to 6.5. Do we have staff report on that? And, uh, actually, questions?
Good evening, Marsha, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. Good evening, hi. Yes, staff report? Okay. Sure, sure. Hi, everyone, I'm mayor and city council, Eric Dombrowski, deputy director. Um, this item before you is, um, consideration to approve the Fourth Amendment for an agreement with Library Systems and Services who, uh, currently operate our library on a contractual basis. Um, the amendment would increase the, uh, agreement value by about $350,000 for a total of not to exceed just over $13 million. Um, they're under a 10-year term and there, there's four more years left in their term. Um, and this amendment would allow the library to continue offering literacy and ESL services, um, to the community. Uh, this last year, it was their first year offering these services under this program. And, um, if the council, it's their pleasure in the future to continue funding it through the general, you know, budget process, this would allow, um, the agreement, the room to continue operating those ser- offering those services. And I'm available for any questions.
I don't have any questions. I just want to congratulate you guys on, uh, implementing this program. It's remarkable. It's, it's, it was launched, I, as I understand, in December 2023. So it's been in place for about eight months and thus far, 48 participants, 320 hours of individualized services for literacy, uh, and for ESL, uh, programming. That's remarkable. That speaks to, uh, a very solid need in the community. And the fact that we're going to continue, uh, to, to move this program forward is, is, is something to be noted.
If, if I could, I'm, I'm really the person just processing the paperwork. If I could, I'm really the person just processing the paperwork and writing the staff report. The gentleman who's actually doing all the work, Robert Shoup, our library director, is here as well. Him and his team are actually providing those services, so just wanted to point that out and give credit where credit is due.
Thank you for what you do. Sure, I just, thank you, I don't know how many people are here.
I just wanted to make sure the proper credit was given.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yep.
So, for this program, is this for adults and children both?
Yes, adults and children, and families as well.
And so, since you're here and you have the camera on you?
Okay.
If there's someone watching you from home that wants to learn how to read, maybe an adult, you know, late bloomer?
Sure, sure.
How do they go about addressing, do they call the library?
I think, yes, there's information online on the library's website as well, and then they can call the library, they can visit the library. There's a, there's a program, or part of the program is kind of an application process, and then if the application process, after that, then there's an intake process and an interview process, all on a very confidential basis. That's a very important part of the program, is making sure that, you know, it's not an easy process, so you wanna make sure that their confidentiality is kept. The staff are amazing, and they do a great job making sure that their dignity is maintained.
And so, I think I know the answer, but I want you to say it.
Okay, sure.
What is the cost to a participant for this?
It is free.
It's free? So, if you know anybody who needs to learn how to read or write, who has a quest for knowledge and wants to be literate, please reach out to the Palmdale Library, it's free.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member Ben Court, for, that's exactly the reason why I pulled the item, because it's such a wonderful program. I know there is a need, it takes a lot of courage for somebody to acknowledge and accept help and, you know, to take steps to learn how to read.
It really opens up the world when you're literate and you can read, and all the adventures and knowledge that you can obtain, and I strongly recommend it for anyone, and never be afraid and never be embarrassed.
Absolutely, if there aren't any questions, I'd be happy to move the item.
I'll second it.
We have motion, we have a second, let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting. Motion passes unanimously.
Just wanted to say one thing. It's free to the residents, and it's a wonderful program, but remember, it's paid for, it's not free exactly, because the taxpayers pay for it. All of you residents of the city of Palmdale. So, to residents, I hope everyone participates, but let's remember the taxpayer who paid for all these things, thank you.
Sort of, I mean, not necessarily just us, it's largely paid for by a grant. That's not city-funded.
That also came from tax money.
It's all tax money. All right, item 6.6, I'm gonna go ahead and recuse myself, I've done business with OPSEC. I'm gonna hand the meeting over to mayor Protem, and I'll step out of the room.
Thank you, mayor. All right, does anyone need a staff report on item 6.6?
Nope, happy to move in.
Does anyone need a report on 6.6? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good, start voting, please.
Motion passes.
Come on back, mayor, where is he?
All right, item number seven, appointment.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Sarah Busby to this position.
And that is the library board.
Yes.
Is that correct?
It's the alter, I believe.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, nomination with a second?
Oh, so there are two, right? There's a nomination for a seat and an alternate, is that correct?
Exactly, so we have one for a member?
Right.
A sitting member, and one for an alternate.
Right.
I'm naming it for the member.
The member?
Yes, please.
So, we have a motion and a second to appoint for the member position.
Okay, so are we gonna do two motions on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You're slow like me.
All right, start voting.
Is Miss Busby here? There we go. Is Miss Busby here? No.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right, now we have that alternate member. We have a nomination for an alternate member to the library board trustees.
I'm moved to nominate Mr. Jamar Perkins as the alternate.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a nomination with a second.
Is Mr. Perkins here?
Oh, there he is.
Mr. Perkins.
All right.
Come on out, we wanna say a few words?
Mr. Perkins, you've spoken to us before, haven't you? I do remember you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm on the mobile home board as well.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to join the board, me and my family, we moved here two years ago and made Palmdale forever home. We have young girls, and I think libraries need to be what they were when I was a kid, when it was too hot to be on the playgrounds and have stuff that is enriching for the community and the people that's there. So, I would just like to be a part of that in the future, this is where I plan to be.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Yay!
Congratulations. So, just for clarity, sometimes there's confusion, city policy is that you're only allowed to serve on one commission at a time, but because you're serving as an alternate in this function on the library board, you're still able to serve on the other commission that you serve on, on the mobile home rental board.
Okay.
Thank you for your service to our city.
In dual capacity. Yeah. All right, moving on, that takes us to item number eight, city manager's report.
Good evening, mayor and council, we continue to celebrate the summer with the farmer's market every Friday, so come on out and join us. We had an exceptionally warm but exceptionally successful national night out last night at Dominic Masari Park. So, if you weren't part of that this year, please be part of it next year, it was wonderfully attended, and kudos to the staff who worked so hard to put that on, as well as all of our EMS and first responder partners. In addition to that, we will be celebrating the Concert for El King this weekend. We've got the dine and drive-through truck event coming up as well at the Palmdale Auto Mall. We've got Chris Lane on the 17th, and a District 5 Neighborhood Watch on the 19th. Other than that, we've also announced the Alert Palmdale app is up, and mobile, we're tweaking it a little bit, so be patient with us while we do a few little kind of cleanup items, and we encourage everybody to be a part of that, especially considering all this moving and shaking we've had in the last week. So, please make sure to visit our website and sign up to be a part of those efforts.
Okay. Item number nine, sheriff's report. Here comes our captain. You doing, sir?
Good, how are you?
Doing great.
Good evening, Mayor Bishop, Mayor Protem Loa, council members Bettencourt, Alarcon, and Olson, and Assistant City, or actually, City Manager Perez. During the month of July, we launched our new community surveys. The surveys simply ask, how can we help and how are we doing? These are ongoing and will be measured monthly, they're attached to our website, as well as deputies will be handing out the survey codes at every contact they have. For the month of July, we received 172 submissions for the first month. One of the most consistent community complaints has been delayed response times, which we've been diligently working on to address through management efforts, as well as expanding the partnership with the city's public safety department to utilize community service officers for certain calls for service as well as report writing. Through the month of July, our rolling average for response times in the city to routine calls for services is at 126 minutes. That's compared to 155 minutes last year during the same timeframe. For the month of July, our average routine response time in the city was 122 minutes, which is a big improvement compared to 206 minutes last year during the month of July, about an 80-minute decrease. In examining the past 10 years of call data, July has historically been our busiest month for calls in the city, which I think is a pretty good response this month for us. Through July, we've handled 30,566 calls for service in the city, compared to 29,610 calls last year, an increase of 956 calls or 3.2%. In terms of Part 1 crimes, and this is based on preliminary data, it'll be official as of the 10th, we are currently averaging 308 Part 1 crimes in the city per month. Part 1 crimes include murders, rapes, assaults, robberies, burglaries, thefts, and arson. Based on preliminary data, through the month of July, it appears crimes against persons are currently down 3% for the year compared to last year. This includes murders, rapes, and assaults. When it comes to violent crime, I'm happy to report gang-related shootings in the station's jurisdiction, which is city and county, is down 39% compared to last year, and down 59% when compared to 2022, and that's for the whole station's jurisdiction. Within the city of Palmdale itself, we've had nine gang-related shootings this year, and 14 total for the station. This downtrend is attributed to proactive enforcement, such as our county summer enforcement team, which has made 249 arrests this summer, and recovered 19 firearms already, as well as the city-funded gun buyback event we had in June, which took 43 firearms off the street. In fact, Palmdale Station has recovered 95 firearms this summer so far. We're beginning to see results in our efforts to reduce property crimes as well, which have been driven by auto theft and retail theft. In June, we were up 18%. This was reduced by four percentage points in July, it is now below a 14% increase for the year. With that said, the preliminary data for July shows the lowest number of auto thefts per month for the year at 34 in the city, compared to a monthly average of 74, so we chopped it down by 40 for the month of July. And a continued impact on larceny theft, in which we had 86 in the city, compared to a monthly average of 139. So, some of the efforts are actually starting to pay off for us. Crime trend data and community input are utilized on a weekly basis to drive crime strategy in combating these crimes. The use of city-funded technologies such as flock cameras has proven to be very effective in combating auto theft. We have also partnered with the Regional Theft Task Force on auto theft to do undercover surveillance operations using the flock technology. And based on preliminary data, we've had 397 arrests in the month of July. Traffic enforcement and collision prevention continue to be a critical thing for us as well. We are currently averaging 152 collisions per month, which is an increase of 13% compared to last year, but we've had a decrease in fatal collisions, we're at nine year-to-date. We experienced a 27% reduction in collisions when comparing collisions last year. So, for the month of July, we had a 27% reduction. We're also up 24% in traffic citations. We have 9,697 traffic citations year-to-date compared to 7,848 last year. This is largely attributable to the seven city-funded items that are strictly into traffic enforcement. Last night's national night out was a big success with lots of community engagement taking place, we handed out a lot of survey codes and had a good engagement effort. We have another upcoming city-funded gun bike back event on September 20th here in Ponce de Llan Square, so hopefully we can get some folks out to surrender their firearms and get a gift card for it, as well as we will be hosting a Halloween-themed open house at the sheriff's station on October 19th. We truly appreciate the support we receive from the community and the city as a whole, we're working together daily to ensure public safety, and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Council, do you have any questions?
No, I just want to make sure people know how to get to your website, it would be Once you get to that splash page, up in the upper right-hand corner, there's three little bars, click on that bar, and it will take you to your LASD, click on that, and you can pick Palmdale Station.
What's their phone number?
It's 661-274-2400.
I wonder why she knows that? All right. Yes, thank you, Captain, thank you for your report, and you've been at it since early this morning with the boosters?
Sure.
And we saw each other there. That item for the open house on the 19th of October, I've discussed that with our city manager, and we will do everything possible to support that event. It seems like it's a great event for the community, and an opportunity for the residents to come in and look at the facilities, including the jail facility, which will be decorated in a haunted kind of way.
It'll be a haunted jail, and the way we see it is we have not had an open house in several years, it's the people's house, they're welcome to come visit it.
Very good, thanks, sir.
Because jail is not scary enough.
I'm just sad, man, friend.
Apparently.
You outdid yourself. Would you like to mention how great our code enforcement is and how helpful they are?
We actually had a very successful operation during 4th of July, a lot of folks got cited, a lot of fireworks were recovered. We're continuing to work that partnership, addressing different issues that typically deputies would be responding to, the code enforcement responding to instead, so we could have the resources available. We're looking to expand that program and work together to get that synergy out of it. So, thank you.
I just wanted to congratulate you, you noted significant reductions in response times in various categories, that's a reflection of the new leadership that you bring to our Palmdale Station, so I just wanna say thank you for your leadership, and just, I'll do it later.
All right. Yes, I would just like to echo the chamber, thank you for what you and your deputies do to keep us safe, and we wanna be good partners, we wanna help, we know it's difficult, it's not as easy as it used to be with shortages and just the environment today, but we wanna be the best partner we can be with our code enforcement team for you guys to help alleviate or relieve some of the lower-level calls, so that way you guys can prioritize those emergency calls and get there faster. So, we wanna be good partners, let us know whatever it is we can do to keep a fruitful relationship.
Thank you, we look forward to the continued partnership for sure, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's exactly why I mentioned the code enforcement, because I think there's really good synergy there, and we've got some innovative ideas that are expanding that and making things better for our residents.
Right, they're able to respond to some of those calls.
In a community-oriented way.
All right, I'll just add one thing, we're working on a project right now to have a virtual deputy. So, there will be certain instances where you'll be able to plan ahead, a Zoom contact with us, in which, you know, we might not be able to get to you that hour, but the next day or two, you can wait, we'll have that conversation with you, whatever we need to address, whether it be a certain type of crime, we could take over the online reporting, or discuss a certain thing happening in your neighborhood, or some type of vacation patrol check request, something to that effect. We're looking to more efficiently utilize our resources and not have folks waiting for us sometimes.
Yeah, that's gonna be the name of the game, I think depending on what it is, a lot of people would probably like an in-person response, but sometimes when it is just purely a small case or a need for police or sheriff's report where they just need, you know, maybe fill out an accident?
Yes.
You don't need a deputy there, that can just be submitted online or...
Absolutely, so we've already developed the form and the scheduling system, we're just kinda running it through the test process right now.
Okay. Anybody else? All right.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too. All right, so that takes us to item number 10. Council reports announcements, okay, so let's, item number 10, let's go ahead and start.
Well, mine is very short, it has been submitted, because I was on vacation, I was in Philadelphia when Trump got shot, so that was pretty exciting. Yeah, and then took a vacation up into Big Bear, taught my kids, grandkids, how to kayak, so that was fun. So, I was out of town, my phone was not working, I'm having major problems with my phone, so if you've called me, we're trying to work it out, I know you called me too, so we're trying to get my phone fixed.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right.
Very good.
Mostly vacation.
Well, I've got a list of items that I did during the month of July, including Spanish talk radio, which I did with you, mayor, and we did again today. I attend the Palmdale Sheriff's Boosters, I serve as vice president for that organization. Firework celebration at Palmdale Amphitheater on the 4th of July was fantastic show, very well-attended. Then, High Desert Corridor press conference with Labor, we're bringing high-speed rail to Antelope Valley at our station, and that was a press conference with Labor to announce the Bright Line that's currently going to go from Las Vegas down to San Bernardino County, but eventually there will be a link to the city of Palmdale. And that, along with high-speed rail that's in the works now, that is slated to come to the city of Palmdale as well, that will change transportation up here. And we'll see, it's gonna take some time, and it's gonna take a lot of money, again, the taxpayers paying for it, but we're looking forward to that. We had a Neighborhood Watch at Rancho Vista Park in District 2, which is the district that I represent. July 10th, we had a council meeting. July 11th, we had another multi-agency at the AV Fairgrounds for the Resiliency Center Groundbreaking, that's going to be the center that at some point, and I hope it doesn't come in any near future, but if there is any kind of a disaster, and Antelope Valley Fair has now created this almost $100 million project, it's going to include a facility to take in persons that might have become unhoused due to an earthquake, or fires, or any kind of a similar disaster. It's also going to have a kitchen that will be able to provide food for up to 2,000 persons a day, and so that's in the works, it's gonna get going, and the groundbreaking was on July 11th. And so that's in the works. It's going to get going, and the groundbreaking was on July eleventh. I'm part of the County Sanitation Board District Twenty, but we have the meeting for both Districts Twenty and Fourteen at the same time. JPA Board of Directors meeting. There was a ceremony for Dr. Smith from Plant Forty-two who served locally here and retired from there, but promptly went to work in Mojave in aerospace as well there. But he's a good friend of the city of Palmdale, and several of us were there. Club Pilates, or is that how you say that? Pilates? Pilates, okay. That's a new business that's opened in the city of Palmdale and to get people healthy exercising, very well-attended. The Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District, I'm a member of that. Edwards Air Force Base Civilian Military Annual Barbecue. Palmdale, Antelope Valley, has one of the most active civilian military groups in the United States. We support our military. We support our Air Force, and annually they have a barbecue. And I participated in that along with some other people from the City Council. The Summer Concert Series for Flo Rida was a lot of fun.
He said it, right?
That truly was an amazing performance. I mean, those guys were something else, and they brought a lot of the young kids up there. First, they brought the young ladies up there, and it was very energetic and very entertaining. And then they brought the boys up, and my grandson among them. And I could see him, and he was having a whoop of a time. So that's good, and we've got more concerts coming, and I mean, they're lively events. It's one of the things that we do for our residents. It's a lot of fun. Marie Kerr, the amphitheater, is a fabulous venue for these events. Then I'm on the Antelope Valley Transit Board of Directors, and, you know, we continue to provide transportation for those persons that need bus. And, you know, we've been able to obtain an equality of funding between the city of Palmdale and the city of Lancaster, and we're trying to bring Los Angeles County along with that so that all of the three entities are doing their fair share in using the money from the taxpayers to provide transportation to our residents. I'm very happy and I'm humiliated in a real sense that I was appointed to the AV Fair Joint Powers Authority. I attended my second meeting actually in July. So I'm now a part of the Fair Board and representing the city of Palmdale, and I wanted to thank all of you fellows and ladies for that appointment. There's a lot of great things that are coming at the fairgrounds, and you saw one of the things tonight that the fair does with its animal auction program and the feeding the kids programs as well. And then on July twenty-seventh, another business had a grand opening for the patio. That's Baracoa Cuban Restaurant. It's on Tenth West. And if you want some delightful comida cubana, go to Baracoa. It was a great event, and people should enjoy that. So it's a shout-out to Baracoa. They're a great community member. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Well, I attended a lot of those same events you did. Just a few of them that I thought stood out that were special were the fireworks celebration. I've been attending the family movie nights. I attended the Med Stat Health and Safety Services ribbon-cutting sanitation meeting with you. I met with Sheriff Luna. We did the video and the Pathway Home LA County briefing as well. So we've been working with Pathway to Home with the county, and we were able to get eighty unhoused people off the street. So it was the largest pathway-to-home operation in LA County to date. So I want to thank the city, all of our community partners that made that possible because we're doing what we can to make a difference and improve the quality of life for those who are less fortunate than a lot of us. I attended the Fight Fentanyl Summer Program graduation with Councilmember Olson. The briefings and meetings, it's non-stop. We all have pretty active schedules. But something stood out earlier. When we were on break, Ms. Alakon showed me a video of the LA Care and Blue Anthem backpack, and she did a shoe giveaway. Do we have that video? And it's a little unorthodox, but she showed me this video, and I thought it was real important to show the community how well we're working together. So here it is. So I want to thank staff. We kind of threw that on you last minute, but I thought that was important to show what the community's doing, and I don't want to take more, I'll jump.
No, no, no. Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing that video to be played, and thank you to staff for doing that again at the last minute. It was a remarkable event. For those of you who had the opportunity to attend, you guys know, but for those who weren't there, there were over two thousand people in attendance. We gave out over a thousand backpacks full of school supplies and distributed nearly five hundred pairs of shoes to kids for back-to-school. You know, new kids, new shoes on the first day of school presents a different level of confidence, enables learning in a different kind of way. I remember waiting in line for these kinds of events when I was a kid. They changed my life, and I know that we changed lots of lives during this event. I want to say special thank you to Park and Rex, the entire team. You guys were remarkable. This took, I want to say, what, four months of planning? We met many, many months ago in order to make this event happen. So thank you to each and every one of you for the planning stages, but also on the day of. It was hot, but we were all out there in full force, so thank you to Park and Rex. Thank you to LA Care. They're on Palmdale Boulevard. They're one of the most remarkable organizations in our community. They provide so many resources to folks in our community, especially those in need and the most vulnerable. So thank you to them. Thank you to Blue Cross and Blue Shield. They were out there, and I shared this with the mayor the other day. They were out there on the day of the event, and they saw, one of their executives from Sacramento who flew in to attend the event. She noticed that the line was so long for the shoes, and she walked over to me, and she said, "Are you the one?" And I said, "Yeah." She said, "This is a wonderful idea. I took a video of your line and your shoes, and I sent it to my CEO, and so I want to do all that I can to do..." She's made a commitment that we're going to continue to hold shoe events, and we're going to work in partnership with you to expand them here in the city of Palmdale and potentially statewide. So I just, it was a tremendous success at McAdams Park, first of its kind and of its magnitude. So thank you to all of those who supported the event, who participated, and congratulations to all the wonderful, beautiful kids that were recipients of brand-new backpacks and brand-new kicks.
And I got to tell you, we are so lucky to have an LA Care in Palmdale. Laura and I were on the council in 2016 when they had their ribbon-cutting. And if you didn't know, LA Care, the LA Care Health Plan is the nation's largest publicly-operated health plan in the country, providing health insurance to families and individuals to those in need. So it acts as a safety net for those who need health insurance, and we have a beautiful facility right there on Palmdale Boulevard and Twenty-Fifth Street East. So we're so lucky to have all these partnerships in the community to see. I think in the last week, we had like eight backpack giveaways. That was definitely the bigger one, but we've had a lot of... We have a lot of people in the community coming together and providing resources to those in need, and I'm so grateful for that.
Yeah, it was an honor to host the event in my district. It's an honor to have LA Care in my district, so thank you to everybody. We're going to just run through mine, and then we can go to Councilmember Olson. Just a few of them. A lot of these events were mentioned. A couple that were of note, early in the month, the day after Fourth of July, I met with the Campos family. Their home was burnt down as a result of illegal fireworks that ended up in their property and completely demolished their home. They were displaced, a family of seven. And so that was a particularly touching moment. Thank you to the entire city and Saves Family, who helped them in their time of need. I also met with L A S D Sheriff Luna with regards to, and I don't know if at some point the city attorney wants to give a briefing or an overview on the recent Supreme Court ruling, the Grants Pass case, and the California executive order that changes how we can address encampments of the unhoused. That was a really informative meeting. And then I followed up with offering testimony at the LA County Board of Supervisors meeting, where they were discussing, in light of that Supreme Court ruling, how they were then going to change their strategy and allocate resources to house all of those that are without shelter now. And then, what I said I was going to mention later, partnering with the sheriffs and code enforcement and a variety of other city departments. Council District Five, my same park, McAdam Park, we're having our Neighborhood Watch, August nineteenth meeting at six PM. Please come out. It's going to be a lot of informative stuff that we distribute and presentations. Would love to have a good turnout there, so please, if you're interested, August nineteenth, McAdam Park, six PM.
All right, thank you. I was listening to that county meeting, by the way. That was a lengthy one. And I heard you speak about the end-of-the-line issue, so thank you for that. Okay, Eric, you're finally up.
Sure. You covered everything.
Save the best for last.
No, okay, real quick. Fourth of July at the amphitheater was a great event. We still have a couple more Summer Series events, so if you haven't gotten tickets, get them because it's a great time at the amphitheater, if it's not too hot or windy. One of the highlights of being on this council is my appointments to the transportation committees along with Mayor Pro Tim Loa, High Desert Corridor, North County Transportation AVTA. There are big, big things happening for the city of Palmdale transportation-wise. I say this a lot. There's transportation revolution in California, and we're at the center of it. One of the milestones being that press conference about our signing the High Desert Corridor Labor Agreement with the local trades. That is a milestone. That project's moving along, and I can't wait until we break ground. Also had a meeting with Sheriff Luna, the undersheriff, the chief of the North Patrol, city attorney, others. It was a very informative meeting, a great meeting. We didn't hold back on what our concerns are, and he was very responsive to that, so I look forward to continuing conversations so that this community gets what it deserves, the protection that it deserves, the crime reduction, the deputies that the sheriff's department deserves. So we're going to keep pushing. We're going to keep fighting. We're going to keep increasing code to offset as much as their responsibilities as we can. We have a lot of progress to go, but I'm very happy with where we're at and the team that we have to do it. That goes into with the Mayor to the Fight Fentanyl Summer Program graduation. Those kids that volunteered for that are amazing. They learned a lot, and they're ready to be ambassadors to take back what they learned to their schools because we got a fentanyl problem. We got a drug problem, and we need to get the word out as much as we can. And it was just heartwarming to see how willing these kids were to step up and be those ambassadors for us. So congratulations to all of them. I did an interview with AV Alta. If you don't know AV Alta, it's the new pro football team coming to the Antelope Valley. We've got a partnership with the city of Palmdale that we'll be announcing soon, but I'm excited to support them. And one last thing, I represented the city at the Paribasum Community Meeting regarding the concerns of Highway 138 and the safety problems that we have. Palmdale stepping up. We're increasing enforcement on our portion of 138, so hopefully that slows down traffic before it gets to Paribasum, Little Rock. There's a major issue there. We're doing what we can city-wise. The state needs to do what they can to deem that a safety corridor, get more highway patrol on there, get more safety mechanisms put in place, but the community's coming together to support that initiative. And one last thing, if you look at my informational report, there's a gap between July twelfth and July twenty-fifth. I got some sort of bug. I never get sick, but I got a two-week something that wasn't COVID, but it put me out. And just for your information, there's something going around. If you look at the COVID rates as well, if you go to LA County Health Rates, COVID is spiking right now, and kids are going back to school. They're going to pass it to each other. They're going to bring it home. So just be careful out there. That's the point of what I'm trying to get at. Just be careful. Use caution. There's bugs and COVIDs and all sorts of things in the air, so.
Thank you for all that information. That was very informational. Okay, so with that, it's going to move us to non-agenda public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak?
Yes, Mayor. We have Carla Humbler.
Come on down.
Good evening. Hello. I'm here to address you about the animal shelter crisis. I know it's a non-agenda item, and some people were here last month, but this is Kevin, three-month-old Great Dane, and he probably has another two days. He just got labeled to a rescue only because he has tested positive for Giardia, and they just changed their policy where then they are going to be labeled rescue only and seventy-two hours, where it wasn't that way before. So we're all reaching out to rescues. They're all full. We, you know, it's hard for them to take an animal. In seventy-two hours, it's hard to find a rescue, so, you know, he may not make it out. But if anybody knows a rescue, I'd appreciate it. But we're asking for more resources. The city can help the county. I know it's county shelters and the city contracts with the county. We would like more spay and neuter. We have sent an email to Carrie German and have gotten a response, and, you know, we just feel like we get answers like it's been done, or we've tried it, or this, or that, or the other thing, but we just really would like some solutions. So that's what we're asking for. I'm here to ask for it as a concerned citizen. But I just want to show Kevin again, three-month-old at the Palmdale Shelter. The camera?
There's cameras everywhere.
At the Palmdale Shelter. If anybody knows a rescue, because he has to have a reputable rescue to get him out, but you could foster. You know, we ask for fosters a lot, so.
All right, thank you. All right.
Alexine Rivas. Colletzing Rivas. Last name Rivas.
Hello.
Hello. I just wanted to speak on... On June thirtieth, I lost my home due to a fire, because of fireworks. It's where my family and I grew up, and... It's where my family and I grew up, and there's nothing that was saved. My family has reached out to the city to to stop the, to stop the show that they had for the Fourth of July, and they didn't. Our house is right in front of the park where they had it. Thank you.
It's okay. We hear you.
Is your, I think, is your grandma your mom? She's here too.
Okay. All right, next, we'll just move on to the next speaker.
Christina Rivas.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Christina Rivas, and my home is the one that was in reference today. I'd like to start with a special recognition to Councilwoman Andrea Alarcón and to Felix Menendez with the Salvatore Organization for the compassion, the community, and the assistance with my displaced family. On June 30th, 2024, the arson detectives did deem my home, did perish due to fireworks. And it is, it is going to be labeled that whether it was safe or sane or illegal, but it was due to fireworks. The question before my two minutes are up is I want to know what is the city of Palmdale going to do to ensure safety to the homes and the lives such as my family is here today, to support, to make sure that the city of Palmdale residents are safe from whether it's illegal fireworks, which we have, we have their, I know that there's code enforcement for that. And, and right now, just to let you know, we are still struggling with public housing. And luckily for places like Race Resources and SAVES, as we were talking about them earlier, I'm now a resident in that need. Okay, we can go from homeless in an instant, just like that. And again, I look forward to, in case my time is up, I look forward to working with you guys moving forward outside of this meeting because I have many, many other questions as far as housing, public housing, and just the lack thereof. And again, I don't have enough time to get over all the details, but I have plenty of other additional details that I would like to address moving forward because we are still struggling. And as a three-year Palmdale resident, I must say, at the very least, I'm extremely disappointed with the lack of cooperation and what I've found this far with the city. And I would like, moving forward, to still call Palmdale a place that I still call home. And at this moment, I'm without. Moving forward, I know that the Fourth of July event did move on, and I did ask for, thank you for that.
All right, thank you, and we're all very sorry about your loss.
Sonia Burke.
My name is Sonia Burke. Thank you for having me. It's my first time here, I'm super nervous.
Welcome.
So thank you for having me. I wanted to address the rise in the homeless population in the AV area. Over the past year, there has been an increase in the homeless population in the Palmdale area, which I believe has led to the rise in the number of fires, graffiti, and home robberies. I wanted to ask if the homeless population from the valley, L.A., and beach areas are being relocated to the AV Palmdale area. I ask because of the increase, and during the 2022 midterm elections, the Culver City residents rallied at various homes and schools to discuss their concerns. And when the homeless issue came up, many suggested relocating them to Palmdale, Lancaster. Can you guys see my heart? And then lastly, there was a fire on the corner of Branchal Vista and Division near many homes, and in the center of it was a shopping cart indicating to me that it was caused by a homeless person. To reduce these fires, can the city of Palmdale clear the brush from fields that are neighboring the residential communities? Removing the brush sooner than later would help reduce the risk of our homes being damaged and destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Rick Kerwin.
Hello, sir.
Good evening, council. I'm here to discuss the parking restrictions on the west side of Palmdale now due to street sweeping. Both sides of the street for five hours a day, so we're gonna have to empty hundreds of cars out of each neighborhood on that day. There's a reason for a lot of house, a lot of multi-generational houses now, adult kids living at home because of the economy, so there's several cars at every house. If, a lot of these zones I looked at, they're ten or twelve blocks, square blocks wide, and if someone's in the middle of that block and they need to move their car, they're gonna have to move it six, seven blocks away, leave it there for five or six hours. If you're a commuter, you're gonna have to move your car the night before and not pick it up till the next night because you're down in the valley from seven in the morning till six at night. Moving the cars to an area makes them a risk for break-ins, thefts, catalytic converters, pretty much setting them out, you know, out in the open that anybody knows they're gonna be there for a while and they're gonna take something from them. And I called when the signs first went up, and I went through four or five people going through the city, and half of them told me the reason these signs and restrictions were put up is because there's a lot of cars on the streets that don't get moved. Let's take care of that problem and not worry about the people that occasionally park on the street and have to, because you just, you can't eliminate all parking on the street for five hours a day. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Spari and Steven.
Honored to meet you guys. I'm a volunteer with L.A. County, Los Angeles County Animal Care Centers. I work mainly, I volunteer mainly at Lancaster, but I also do a little bit of Palmdale. I've been at it for about thirteen years, and I'm here to, on behalf of some of my friends here, to kind of, just wanna go over a few things with you that, I really, I know you guys are great advocates. My good friend Jesse, who I trained years ago, brings dogs in here all the time. So I know you're advocates, but I just wanted to point some things out that we don't hear a lot about, and I was really happy to see the beginning here. So far this year, the fiscal year just started, so from July 1st to the end of July, we had 2,296 admissions come into the, into the county. It's all shelters. Of that, eight hundred and sixty have been euthanized. Most healthy, that was for space. Last year, we had 32,823 admissions come into all the shelters. Of that, nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-five were euthanized. That works out to about eight hundred and thirty-three animals per month. For Palmdale, this year, so month, you had 393 admissions come in, and 176 of those animals were euthanized. That was last month, just down the street. That's the reality that's going on out there. And for last year, you had 500, 887 admissions, of which 2,160 were euthanized, 1,037 dogs, 737 cats, 386 of other categories. This is Kingston, put down July 23rd after I've worked with, I've worked with a lot of dogs, and I see this happen all the time. I can't think about it too much. Perfectly healthy dog euthanized because he couldn't find a home for space. I just wanna say, I know you guys do a lot, but we've gotta do better. Thank you very much. I have copies if you're interested.
Yeah, do you have a little distributed, and thank you for coming. Next speaker.
Eugene Hernandez.
Eugene.
Hi, someone got a haircut on. Either you or Eric. Anyway, at the beginning of the meeting, I really found it offensive for your code enforcement officer, the tall one, to be searching these teenagers from the 4-H club, emptying all their contents of their purse as though they were ISIS-K terrorists. You know, do they have to really be such a fascist manner? These are just kids who come into a city council. Is this the welcome we give them to be searched, like they're gonna bring bombs or something to the city council? Really? You know, I also would like to say that I had a conversation with Alarcón a month ago about establishing a month to honor Latino heritage. And all I heard was disparaging remarks from her, saying, no, 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 we don't know how to do that. And I wonder, we have January celebration at Martin Luther King, February, Black History Month, June, Juneteenth. But we have nothing for the 63% of the Latino-Chicano community. No one knows about our history. The fact that the Mexican Revolution was the greatest revolution up to the time of 1917, that in 1932, 2,300 Chicanos were deported, native-born people into Mexico during the Great Depression. They don't know about the high school walkouts of 1968, or the Sleepy Lagoon case, or the Zootsod riots. So I found it very, very discouraging from hearing from a Latina that putting that down. Oh, by the way, I got a, I got a text from your father saying that he's gonna make a killing in real estate. And I thought, what greed do these people have? That he has a good retirement from the state and from the city, and now he wants to make a killing in real estate. Thank you.
For the record, I made very clear during our conversation that this city proudly honors and celebrates Hispanic Heritage Month every September, and it also contributes in part to the annual celebration that goes back and forth in the Antelope Valley between the city of Palmdale and the city of Lancaster. We share equally in sponsoring a large portion of that celebration, and so I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay. Next speaker.
We have Renee Kimbrel.
Hi.
I'm back again.
Good to see you.
Last, at their last meeting, we, a lot was brainstormed for the last two weeks. We came up with a lot of ideas and suggestions to help the shelter problem. I wrote a very lengthy email to Carrie German. I have copies of it here. Her response was not very encouraging, so I figured you guys all need to know about it. I also have an invitation to the Best Friends Summit this Saturday at Culver City Marriott, where they will be discussing community-centered strategies for diversion intake, saving lives by engaging with your local clinics, resolving barriers to increased life-saving measures, understanding your ordinances to expand life-saving. I think it's vital that someone from the city goes to that. We are going, a few of us are going to the meeting. It would be great if someone from here could go too. Maybe they can give us some good pointers. I also have a letter that Linda Blair World Foundation wrote to Governor Newsom a year ago, asking him to declare a state of, how does she word it? Disaster for what is going on. I mean, it's, I don't know. If you guys could look at my Facebook page, I could sit there and cry all day because all it is is about all these homeless animals, and now the shelter has changed their rules that, oh, now they have Giardia, which they probably got while they were there, and now we're gonna kill them because they can only be there for three days. BS, I'm sorry. You know, we have to make an effort to do something. There's a whole lot of us that spend hours every day trying to do this, and we've come up with all the suggestions we could think of, and we would appreciate if you would read my stuff and let me know what you think.
Okay, please leave it with the clerk. We'll be in touch.
We have Vanessa Rivas.
Hello, council, I'm Vanessa Rivas. I am a victim of the fire that happened on June 30th. I'm here with my family today. We just spoke with my sister and my mother, and really just, I'm trying to get my thoughts together. Really, George, I was disappointed a lot with the sheriff's department in terms of basically, due to their investigation that they did with me and my family about the fire. I feel like there was no initiative that was taken. I am still displaced as of today. I have no home. I've been going back and forth between temporary housing, such as Airbnbs and hotels, and I think, I think really today, I'm just here to basically leave a message with the city of Palmdale today to ask for support and provide services for me and my family. I'm running out of time. Really, I am just asking for, I guess, more engagement. I guess in the terms of people who are struggling with any kind of disasters or homelessness, or yeah, it's a, thank you for your time, thank you.
Thank you. We know it's not easy getting up here and speaking, so.
Abriel, Abriel Rivas.
Hello, council members. My name is Abriel Rivas. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here to discuss the fire and what my family has been through. So during the Fourth of July event with the fireworks, my family asked the city if they could at least postpone the firework event due to the sensitivity of what happened to my family, since it was caused by fireworks, and we hope to at least postpone the event, but they denied it. And so in due to the event, we asked for security around our house, just with the crowd and the traffic control, which they did not do. Yeah, so during the event, we had multiple cars driving in front of our house, and the traffic was just out of control, and it was not safe for us. We also asked for at least maybe just like the protection during that brief time. We also asked, we did talk to the person in charge of the security at the event. He did agree to at least have a patrol car come around, which they did not. And we had this car stuck in front of our property for at least more than two hours. And we also, I would also like to ask how the city of Palmdale is helping its residents to keep them safe when there are houses inflicted, sorry, damaged due to fireworks. Like, we wanna know what you're gonna do about it. We wanna see if maybe you'll put a ban on fireworks or help us keep safe, help us keep homes safe if something like this ever happens again. We don't want this to happen to anybody, so we wanna know what you'll do about fireworks in the future. Thank you.
All right, next speaker.
Isaiah Rivas.
My name's Isaiah, and I'd like to second what they were all saying. This all happened while I was at work, and when I got there, when they called me, I will say I am disappointed with the sheriff's department as well, as in terms of relief, because I, when I got there and found them on the hill in front of the house, they were both barefoot, both my siblings, with a piece of paper from the sheriff's department. And everything that was given to them was really given by the community and the people around us, not really from, you know, emergency services or anything like that. And that's one thing I would say that I would like to see more, what's the word, progress, like something to see better of. Progress, like something to see better of, basically. Because it was like, it wasn't the city itself that was helping. It was more so the people of Palmdale. And I would say that has to be bettered in order for everyone to be, you know, more safe as a community. Just, I mean, you've already heard it a couple of times from them, and that's pretty much the best way you're gonna hear it, you know, from them themselves, but I guess just support as a whole, you know, from the City of Palmdale would be the best thing to say. Yeah, pretty much just, you know, let's just do better as a community, is all. Thank you.
All right.
Jackie Quillen.
And first, I just wanna, I'm very sorry about anybody who lost their home. I mean, I respect them. That's really sad. So I just want to say I'm sorry about that first of all. But since the last meeting, I sat down with a bunch of people at the Lancaster Shelter, just like, what are they doing different to have half the youth euthanization rates as Palmdale? I've asked so many, and the first thing they say is they need to expand. It's very simple, that they have, they don't have any room. And they take in more, as many if not more dogs than Lancaster, and they have half the space. That's the bottom line. And also, I volunteer a lot. I put in, I think, sixty hours since July nineteenth. And I check on the website to see if they're hiring ever. And they never are. There's no openings for entry-level kennel attendant. And I'm like, why? This, Palmdale needs help. But there's no openings. And also, I get so many complaints at Lancaster about Palmdale. People coming to Lancaster because Palmdale wouldn't allow them to see the dogs in the back, or they weren't nice to them, or there was nobody there to help them. So basically, I just, I just wanted to say that they really, really need to expand. That's, that will save dogs, expand the location, and hire more people to help. And I just want to show everybody Kevin again. Remind you about Kevin, and it's a sad story. He, yeah, he got Giardia, which all the dogs get there, because they kennel them five in a kennel, and they drink out of the same water bowl, and they get Giardia. And then that gives them a death sentence, basically, like this poor dog. And it's hard for the networkers to, to get them seen. And a lot of the networkers actually are no longer going to Palmdale because they're not welcome. The people at Palmdale are turning them away because they don't have time, because they need more employees, but thank you.
Thank you for your volunteer work.
Roger Soderstam.
Hello, sir.
Well, I feel my complaints are quite petty compared to people losing their home, animals being euthanized. I'm just up here to complain about the potholes in the roads, which you all drove here, well, except Mr. Curly, who rode here on a mule. But you all know that the roads are in poor condition. Please fix them. Thank you.
Eric, he's giving you a run for your money.
I will, I will just state for the record that tonight, we actually, this council did take action. We appropriated over a million dollars for road repair. And so it was one of the items I was gonna pull, but for the sake of time, I didn't, I didn't want to pull it and have the staff do the report. But since you brought it up, that we'd acknowledge it, that we are doing what we can to fix the roads.
And if you drive down, if you drive down Tenth Street, it's under, it's gonna be under construction. All where retail is, where Best Buy and Target, it's gonna be under construction for a couple of months, but the whole road is getting repaved all the way to Walmart. If you drive it daily, you know how bad that road is. Please bear with us.
And we're still working on R.
Yeah, we're still walking, working on R. There's Thirty-Fifth.
Thirty-Fifth is still being worked on?
Yeah.
Council, if I may, we have over a hundred million dollars right now working on our roads. So there's a lot of construction going on, including the sixty-million-dollar interchange that we are just breaking ground on right now, so there's a lot.
Palmdale Boulevard.
Quite a nordeal for the residents there. But now it's really one of the beautiful boulevards. Are we done with?
No, Avenue T.
For those in my district, yes, Avenue T is a mess. We've allocated the study. It's coming.
We're very passionate about our roads. Thank you.
We are, we are.
All right, next speaker.
No more speaker cards?
All right.
I have a, I have a question. Somebody's pointing, Marcia, are you pointing at somebody over there?
Wait, somebody?
Hello, guys.
Hello.
Well, thank you so much for hearing me. My name is Linda Sharp. And I wanted to say thank you first off, Richard Loa, for noticing that every dime that you guys spend is taxpayer dollars. It's huge. And you actually all serve at our pleasure as residents of the City of Palmdale. So the reason I'm here tonight is kind of talk about the same thing the gentleman back here did in the green shirt, and that's those street cleaning signs. They're a problem, guys. You've set up so that every single neighborhood on both sides of the street are gonna be set up for street cleaning from seven o'clock to four o'clock. But if you go outside of your neighborhood, all of the streets around every neighborhood are no parking, no standing, no stopping. Where are people supposed to park their cars? We're a community that has, because unfortunately, lack of jobs, or jobs that do exist, they don't want to pay more than thirty hours a week, because then they have to pay benefits. So what's wound up happening is our young adults are moving back home. And what do they bring with them when they move back home? Their car. In addition to that, all the new construction that's going on has two-car garages and short driveways. So you can barely get the cars in inside your garage, much less park in your driveway. So where are you gonna park? On the streets. I want to know, what's the fine gonna be for people who are parking on the street on street cleaning day? Do you know yet? It's, it's a mess. Every other municipality I've ever lived in has set it up so on one side of the street, you clean this, you park when the street cleaner comes through, and another week, the other side of the street. This is at rocket science. I love the fact that we're actually cleaning our streets. I've lived in my house for sixteen years, and I can count on one hand the number of times I've seen the truck come through. It happened to come through on Tuesday. But that's when I had four cars, one parked sideways behind the other two cars in my driveway. So please, consider a way, a better way to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Marcia.
Hello. My name is Marcia, and I'm going to be speaking to you as a veteran, an Air Force veteran. And yes, I know that your birthday was a couple days ago for the Coast Guard. So I will wish you a belated birthday, you know, for your birthday. Okay, so it's just a coincidence, the pound. I was at a Veterans Breakfast today, and they handed out flyers that on August eighteenth at the shelter on Sierra Highway, from noon to four, a private event for veterans to adopt dogs and cats. And all fees will be waived for those veterans. So that's on August eighteenth, from noon to four, on Sierra Highway. Bring your DD two fourteen or your ID card. And again, it's a private event just for veterans. So I know you'll find this hard to believe, but I have been interested in pools in Palmdale for forty years. The day after I moved here, I was at the pool getting my daughter signed up for the swim team. Forty years. And on Monday, I found out that veterans can go to lap swim and senior swim for free by just showing their ID card. I never knew that. How could I have not known that? I am both a senior and a veteran. So I would like to see in our magazine that we come out, you know, and for summer, under the senior and lap swim, maybe in little red writing, veterans, you know, free to veterans. Show your ID card. And maybe even a little article, just, you know, about what's available for veterans in the Antelope Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. And pool covers, right, Marcia? Yeah, don't forget the pool covers. All right, do we have any other people wishing to speak? All right, and before.
All right. There's one lady. Oh, here comes Chuck.
Hi, Chuck.
Thank you. Good to see everybody. Rhonda, Mr. Curly. As I sit here, and I've been kind of gone for a couple of meetings, giving me a little bit of time, and let me say I'm speaking more as a taxpayer. I really have to be honest with you guys. As a guy that runs a nonprofit here, and I've given you a hard time left and right about trying to support what we do. But I also am listening to everything you are doing. And I think the city needs to understand what you are doing. You're, you're cleaning up the city. The roads, they might be a headache right now trying to get around some of it. But you're spending money cleaning up the city, making it a beautiful place for people to come, when it's almost the last place anybody can come in Southern California. We're building business, Plant Forty-two, the different things. We're losing business in many areas, but we're working at trying to build the city. And you guys are doing the best you can to distribute the money you have. And at times, it seems like an ungodly amount of money. But prices are expensive. And I see, you know, everything we're doing is expensive. I hear a lot about the dogs and the animals. I've got a couple of dogs. I get it. I always think about the kids, the shootings in the park, all the things that are happening. But I see everybody working at trying to make it better. And to see you spending the money to beautify the city, it only makes sense to slow down and check yourself and find other, a guy like me has got to find other revenue streams, and we're doing it. And it's that simple. The fact I might have been misled coming to Palmdale doesn't mean I don't love Palmdale. Okay? And I want to make that clear.
Thank you, Chuck. It means a lot. Any other speaker? There we go.
Hi, Council. I don't know your names, but I do know. I want to thank Andrea Alacarn. And I also want to thank the Salva Organization at the day of the fire. I'm the grandmother, and these are my grandkids and my daughters. We barely got out. At a hundred and fourteen degrees the next day, the Salva Organization came to help. They came and they, at a hundred and fourteen degrees, we were in a tent, or whatever. I mean, we're homeless. We lost everything. I mean, everything. But Salva took us to eat that day. We hadn't had a good meal since. It's been six weeks. And they have taken us, even Andrea's taken us. It's just bouncing from house to house, I mean, to so many places. It's not home. We'll never be home. And just, we need help. We need to rebuild. We need, my car was destroyed. There's just so many things. My kids lost everything. My daughter lost everything. And we just need help from you guys. Since the fireworks, we don't know who did it. Other than, we almost didn't make it, me and my two granddaughters. We barely made it out. And it's just a lot to say that. We need housing. We need somewhere to stay where we could say it's a home, not bouncing from different places. And the kids not knowing if they're gonna have, you know, anything to go to school or they, they have jobs. They have things. There's just so many things that if we could just get help. That's all we need is help from you guys, because it was a firework that caused it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none?
Could, could I ask the city manager to comment on this? I, I feel terrible about what I've heard tonight. You know, in terms of the family losing their home and all of that. But I believe the city has reached out to this family for some support. And it's also important to note, from what I understand, and I know that jurisdictional lines, sometimes people don't really know that whether they live in the City of Palmdale, or whether they live in Los Angeles County, or whether they live in the City of Lancaster. And as I understand it, this particular property is actually in the county of Los Angeles. And I'm wondering if the family's reached out to the county of Los Angeles for some assistance. I want us to do everything possible to assist this family within our means. But there's things that have already been done. And could you please tell us, Ms. Perez, what's been done by the city?
If I may just jump in?
But we know nothing.
Just for one second.
No, I'm requesting that.
I get it, Councilmember or Mayor Potembla, but I was directly involved in working with this family from day one, as well as with Supervisor Barker and the city manager in the response to the family. So I just want to make two comments. One, Supervisor Barker said absolutely yes, she would be happy to help in any way possible, and she's working directly with the city manager. But jurisdictional lines, yes, they matter. The, the home is literally across, like, a little dirt path from the park. But whether or not their home was actually placed, is located geographically within the City of Palmdale's boundaries or unincorporated LA County, what happened as a result of that fire is that a family in Palmdale is now homeless. And it is incumbent, I believe it is incumbent upon us to take care of the family, because otherwise they have nowhere else to go.
I want to repeat that I feel terrible about what happened. But I believe, I don't want the impression to be left here that the City of Palmdale hasn't done anything, because the City of Palmdale has done things. And, you know, the jurisdictional lines are technicality and the humane thing. The thing that is very touching to the heart is the fact that a family has been left homeless. And that's something that we need to respond to. And thank you, Ms. Alacarn, for everything you've done, along with Catherine Barker and our city manager. But some of the things that have been done, and if you could comment on that, please, Ms. Perez.
Before, look, I know no amount of resources in the world is gonna make up for losing a family home. It's just not gonna cut it. But I know we're all here to make sure that we can all work together between city and county and nonprofits, whoever else that has already come out to help this family. Thank you for, for being part of helping them get back on their feet. But yeah, there's nothing that's gonna make up for that. And we're gonna, we're gonna rally together, and we're gonna, we're gonna do what we can within, you know, within our limitations. And I know the city's been helping. I don't know if, this has been painful enough. I don't know if we want to go over everything but the city, the county, and the nonprofits we have been trying to work lockstep. And I appreciate you coming. It's not, that had to be very difficult to show up in a public setting and expose yourself in a way, you're so vulnerable to the public. And I just, I, I feel that. I saw the pain when I looked at your family in the eyes. And it's just, we're gonna do what we can. I don't, I don't think, I don't think we need to go any further with this.
Well, I just don't want the impression that the city hasn't done anything, because we do care. We do want to extend as much, as much help as we can to the family that's lost his home. But the city has already done some things. And if you could just quickly outline some of the things that we've done.
We have provided, we have offered hotel in three different locations. We have, they have utilized Saves, I believe, a couple of times. We've coordinated gift cards with Red Cross. We've provided meals and daily, forgive me, supplies, toothbrushes, toothpaste through Saves, and all of those types of things as well. And Catherine Barker has offered any assistance that she can provide as well.
Okay, and whatever else we can do, we'll do what we can.
Right. But I want to thank everyone for coming out for public comment tonight. It was a little emotional, a couple, few hot items. But it's not that we don't want to respond. It's that we're not really allowed to respond or engage in a dialogue. But it's, it's our time to listen. It's our, it's our time with our staff to come hear you guys out, to come hear the community. And I want to, I want to express my appreciation, because I know it's not easy showing. And I want to, I want to express my appreciation, because I know it's not easy showing up to city council. I know it's not easy getting here and spending two and a half hours in this chamber waiting to speak. But you're here and you let us know your concerns along with our staff, so we can go to work and address these concerns. So thank you for coming.
We can't engage in dialogue, but we can make generalized statements, correct? I would like to make a couple real fast. Both sides of the street, absolutely stupid. The minute I first read it, I've been vocal about it. So maybe if, just, I'm with you. We, we figured that out. We did, it didn't come out...
Correct me if I'm wrong, but both of our neighbors to the north and the south.
Then they're wrong.
Do it this way. However, that may not work for us, but is that correct?
I believe somewhere in the neighborhood of 65% of the communities in LA County do it the way that we designed it.
But we hear you.
So, so can I, well, since we're all making comments, for the lady that talked about your kids come back and they bring their cars. My daughter's in and out. They don't just bring their vehicles, they bring all their stuff. And where are you going to put it? In the garage. So you can't park in the garage. You pray that you have, like you said, a driveway long enough. I don't know if you guys ever saw the monster truck I used to drive. It was too long for my driveway, because I would block the sidewalk and get a ticket. So couldn't get it in the garage, had to park it on the street. So we all, I mean, we are your neighbors, we are your community council. We feel your pain, and we're going to figure this out, one way or the other. It might take us a little bit of time, but give us time and we'll get this figured out.
And we've been consistent about the messaging, that we're working out the kinks as we go. That's a big one, but we'll get there. And in the meantime, we're not going to be writing tickets. And I understand, right, as we go through this growing pain. So just hang on, we'll figure it out. One last thing that I wanted to mention, there was a comment, is the county dumping their homeless here in the Antelope Valley? I don't know that I've ever seen, like, concrete evidence. But I will say this, since Measure H, their numbers have gone down and our numbers have gone up. Now whether they're sending them here or not, that doesn't change the reality of that fact. That's why we put on the ballot a measure to fight for our local portion. Measure H took over $5 million from our community and gave back roughly 10%. So 90% of our money went to help reduce the homeless numbers in Los Angeles, and our numbers grew? That's absurd. So what this measure will say is if that county's share ever becomes available again, we take it, to not give them the opportunity to take money away from this community ever again. I just want to make one minor correction. The Measure H, which has raised billions of dollars from sales tax and money from the taxpayers over, since 2017. In 2015, the homeless population in Los Angeles County was 30,000. Today, it exceeds 70,000. So the money has been spent and the homeless population, the unhoused population. And this is a humane problem. This is a terrible, terrible problem. And we cannot blame the people that are homeless, because they're there for many reasons. Economic reasons, drugs and alcohol, mental disease, and so on. And we have to be a compassionate society to deal with that. But throwing money at problems isn't the solution, apparently. Not on the, not on the level that has been spent in Los Angeles County. It simply hasn't worked. Now, I understand, and I'm on the homelessness commission. And we're trying to do something in terms of making sure that we get our money, a fair share of our money that we're sending down to Los Angeles. We need to get that money back, at least in a more proportionate amount. And that's what you're talking about, Mr. Olson, that we take control of our own funds. And that opportunity is being provided to us in November. But what I, the only thing I'm saying is that instead of the population decreasing, it decreased last year by about less than 2%, right?
Ours grew.
And ours went up. You're absolutely accurate about that. But in terms of all of the billions of dollars that have been spent on this, we've actually had the population increase by twice, in fact, more than twice. One of the things that has been brought up at the Homelessness Commission is that the previous money that was raised did not address the fact that it was addressing people being moved out of homelessness into places where they could live. And it wasn't addressing the amount of people that were coming into the system. And that's a legitimate point. And the new tax measure is going to try to account for that. But the point that Mr. Olson makes is that we need to have local control over the funds. And it is, it is a very difficult problem. There's tragedies, as been pointed out tonight, that makes people homeless, it's not their fault. And we need to take care of that. But the popular, just simply throwing money at problems doesn't solve it, as can be seen by the increase in the population and homelessness 2017 till now.
So, Mr. Olson, I know you said you don't want to accuse anybody of dumping their homeless here. But I, along with many of my council, we pay very close attention to the homeless people in our area. We recognize our local, regular homeless. And we know when a new batch comes to town, and they're coming from somewhere. And they're coming by the van loads. And if anybody ever wants to leave us anonymous tip to tell me who's bringing them, please call me. Don't have to leave your name or phone number, anything else. But there are new faces all the time. We get people into housing, and a new batch comes up. It's a never-ending cycle. So somewhere, words got out, hey, we know this really warm place you can go. It's really dry and has no water. Would you like to go there? Somebody is selling people on the idea of coming here in their homeless crisis. And I'd like to know who's selling that idea. This is not a very, you know, comfortable place when it's 109 degrees outside and you have no food and you have no water and you have no shelter. So I see a lot of new faces about every month. And I don't know where they're coming from. And we don't do FI cards on the homeless to find out, who are you and where did you come from? Maybe we should have that policy. Maybe we can help unify them with their family members. Right? Maybe we can, reunification is a huge project that a lot of cities try and are successful with. I don't know that we've tried that. I would like to eventually get our own little homeless committee together to help reach, you know, reach these homeless people, find out who they are, what's their need. Is it alcohol, is it drugs, is it mental health? Is it, they're just this place for the family? They came out here and got stuck, right? Transportation's expensive to get back to Minnesota or wherever they're from. So there's a lot of things we can do. I know I'm off topic and this is not an agendized item. So if we could just make a note to maybe talk about this at a future council meeting, that would be great. Sorry.
I know everybody, well, since everybody had an opportunity to talk about it, I'm just going to chime in. I mentioned earlier that I participated in two meetings, one with Sheriff Luna about the Grants Pass Supreme Court ruling, which specifically addresses how municipalities, cities can address encampments. It eliminated the Eighth Amendment cruel and unusual punishment component to the concern. But it still leaves some questions to be answered about, you know, search and seizure, if we take their property and whatnot. And then on top of that ruling, the California issued an executive order sort of authorizing sweeping efforts to clean up encampments statewide. My concern with that is sort of follows with what the council members have spoken about is that as smaller jurisdictions, in LA County, smaller cities, they all implement and adopt ordinances to clear out their encampments. Then what? Where do these people go? They oftentimes will jump onto our MetroLink. And then we've got what we call end-of-line issues, because we're close to the end of the line. They ride the MetroLink all day until the end of the line. And MetroLink has a policy that at the last stop, they mandatorily make everybody vacate the trains, and they leave them on the platform. That's a problem, which is why I then testified before the LA County Board of Supervisors to ask for, to share that piece of the puzzle and to ask for additional resources and to incorporate into the countywide strategy, I, you know, the thought of specific platform resources for end-of-line communities like ours, the city of Palmdale, the city of Lancaster. So it's, I think with the recent legal, you know, legal turn of events, there is going to no doubt be greater shifting of the homeless and unhoused populations. And I think our community in particular is going to be bearing the burden of that, which is why I think it's important that we all speak in unison about additional resources for the Antelope Valley. So thank you for all of what you said.
Okay, let's get back on track. No, it's important stuff, it is. So at this point, we would go to a presentation by city attorney. However, I think we're going to do an adjournment and a memory. Do we have Patricia here? Sophia? Okay, Sophia, I'm sorry. Sophia is going to come say a few words. And I believe we have some other members of the public here that wish to speak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Termiko Copeland, domestic violence regional coordinator with Valley Oasis, passed away on Friday, August 2nd, 2024. She worked tirelessly with unwavering passion to impact countless lives of DV victims and survivors throughout the entire Antelope Valley. Most recently, we have been working with her on our own Domestic Violence Center project. And in the past, we've worked collaboratively on the Dream Center Transitional Housing with advancing communities together. Miko, as she was finally, as she was fondly referred to, also just participated in the city's most recent cohort of the Wellbeing Lab. She was loved by all she met and knew. Her laugh was infectious, and her presence brought joy to everyone around her. She had a beautiful personality. She had a unique ability to make everyone realize they were not alone. Around Miko, everyone felt seen, heard, and loved. We adjourned this evening in her honor. Thank you.
All right, do we have anybody else that would like to speak about her? All right.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sherry Gorman, I'm with Valley Oasis Homeless Services. And Miko wasn't just a coworker, she was a really good friend of mine personally. So first of all, I just want to say thank you so much to the council and city of Palmdale for honoring Miko, allowing us to come here and honor Miko. I want to say thank you to those who brought this city attention and allowing us to come up here and say something for Miko. And I would just like to say on behalf of Valley Oasis, thank you to everyone again for coming here to honor a dear friend, a colleague, a valued member of the community, Termiko Copeland. Though she's no longer with us, her spirit and impact on our community will forever resonate within us. Termiko was not only a coworker, she was a beacon of light for all of us. Her dedication, compassion, and tireless efforts to assist the domestic violence survivors within our organization was something she did with so much compassion. And it was so dear and near to her heart. Termiko's accomplishments and contributions inspired everyone around her and believed in the power of community and worked tirelessly to uplift those in need. Today, we, today as we celebrate her accomplishments, let us also remember the warmth she brought to our lives and the courage she brought to so many survivors. Let us carry forward her legacy of kindness and commitment to serving others with compassion and understanding. One of Miko's favorite sayings is, "Standing in hope." May we all continue to stand in hope and continue to help others. This is for Termiko, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, this time I'll ask Councilmember Alacarn to read a little bit of, you have a biography. We'll learn a little bit about her.
As a survivor of domestic violence, it is a particular honor for me to offer this short bio in memory of Miko. Thank you to the family and to the friends and all of the supporters and those who worked with her for being here to honor her life. Termiko Copeland, overcoming struggles and paying it forward. Termiko has been part of the Antelope Valley community for over a decade. She overcame child abuse during her adolescent years and domestic violence in her early adulthood. On a mission to raise her two beautiful daughters on her own, Kailia, 12, and Alani, 12, and to change negatives to positive, Termiko chose careers that gave back to the community. She was a housing liaison with AV Youth Build for two years, a homeless outreach worker, and later promoted to Domestic Violence Coordinator for Valley Oasis. Termiko also began a yearly conference called DV Courage. She affectionately called it "Her Baby." It was a vision that God gave her to share with the world, and she was able to root it in her position with Valley Oasis. It gave domestic violence survivors a platform and a safe space to share how they found the courage to not only leave their abusers, but to then share their life stories with others publicly. Termiko did not have much family, but she had an older brother named Marquitos and a huge sister circle and a loving work family. Many adored and cherished her for her kind heart, encouraging words, loving ways, and her passion to uplift and promote others. She was recently honored at the Third Annual Rediscover Gala, which was scheduled for August 3rd, 2024, the day after her passing. She was so excited to be nominated and honored amongst other beautiful people. Her brave and strong daughters decided to stand in her place. Miko will forever be remembered as a sweet soul that loved to give the unheard a voice. On behalf of the city of Palmdale, our condolences to the Copeland family. And our prayers are with all of those whom she touched.
So we'll adjourn tonight in her memory. We truly have lost an amazing person in our community. It is truly unfortunate. So we're going to move on to our presentation by city attorney and while the closed session...
Thank you, mayor member, mayor members of the council. We have two properly agendized closed session items. They are actually interrelated, 12-1 and 12-2, Herrera and Huerta. This is some federal litigation that has been going on a while, but may not be after this, so.
Okay.
With that, we can adjourn to...
We'll be back shortly.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the public. Council was updated on, we'll call it two wins, two interrelated cases. The only matter is deciding or waiting to see if there's an appeal. But in the cases, there's a positive status right now, so keep them crossed. With that, back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you to council for the wins.
All right. Thank you. All right, with that, we're going to adjourn the meeting to August 21st, right here, 5:00 PM, at the chamber, Palmdale City Hall Chamber. See you then, thank you, and get home safe.